Before we even jumped in and saw the flag. I believe you can see the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Nothing controversial tonight?
Apparently not.
Well, we'll have to spare us some.
Yeah.
Exactly.
All right, we gotta keep it interesting.
Uh, is, is this, is the Joe on the Zoom, the select board member Joe?
He's muted, so if he's saying yes, we can't hear him.
Just wanna know if he's attending or not.
Yeah.
Okay, never mind. All right.
You can unmute him and maybe.
Well, I can't unmute him. He has to unmute himself.
He has to mute themselves.
So, okay. What am I? It's fine. I just, I was just trying to give him the opportunity to say that he was here. He was here. Sorry, go ahead.
So the minutes, uh, approval of the minutes for the last meeting?
Yep. I make a motion to approve the minutes of October sixteenth, twenty twenty four.
Okay.
So there's a motion by Chris, second by Mark, to approve the minutes of October sixteenth. All those in favor?
What's Joe saying?
What is it? Yeah.
It is Joe.
No.
Joe, we can't hear you, bub.
Not there.
Next is the first quarter treasurer's report.
So I included in your packet, but just the, uh, the quarterly report and, um, like you asked to see, I, I don't see any, um, issues so far. We're, we're on track. Some of them are, um, fully spent, but the items that I looked through that are fully spent are the ones that they're like dues, things like that, that we have to pay at the beginning of the year. Um, everything else is on track. So that is not, the Joe online is not select for it, Joe.
That's not you.
Okay, there he is. So that answered that question. So that answered that question. But other than that, I don't, if, if you have any questions, I'm, I'm happy to try to answer it, but, um, you can take those and prove them as you want, but everything is on track. There's nothing that's necessarily out of line at this point. Starting to disagree.
So I know that every month I put in a gas slip from the police department and it is submitted to Jessica under a, uh, an invoice that says Monmouth Public Works, how many gallons of gas that we've used, and I do the math that per price per gallon.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Then there's no charge.
Is nothing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. So what, what, all it's doing is it's just, it's hitting the, the costs are hitting the public works department. I will, I will make that, um, inquiry, make sure.
You shouldn't have spoke up. It's a transfer. You're very honest.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't hit automatically, but it is a transfer and you are correct. It's, it's also, I noticed, it's also, uh, the, the tru- that same issue is also, I believe with the fire department.
I didn't think that.
Part of the page before.
But it, it helps the kinda.
Right. See, so if you're, if you look at the, uh, the, the fire department, it's the same issue. Let me, let me check it that. Gas.
Yep, yep. I was gonna say, we wanted them to date, I, um.
Good point. I will, I will, I will look in that.
Cause the structural engineers have that under control.
You don't say anything Tony has to pay for.
Exactly.
Comes out of his pocket.
Get him mad at me because I ask them, you know, your garbage and, you know, all this stuff. So, you know, I could say.
It's a, it's a very good point to make, not, not only just because of PD and fire, but also because the school buses pull up and that's a completely different budget. And we do, we do not wanna be paying for the.
No.
For our school bus.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, we skipped past item number two. On our agenda.
We did a, a minute.
No, we didn't.
I'm looking at it, am I looking at a different agenda? Just update on a comprehensive plan? I have an app.
Okay.
I'm looking at that.
What did I do? Did I print it online?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I put the, that's your, that's the December eleventh meeting. See, I make the agendas as we, as I know what's gonna happen next. Okay. Don't forget that. I'm sorry.
But if you need.
She will be here on December eleventh to update, the, the, the new planner will be here on December eleventh to update you on the conference. You go make your. I'm sorry.
I brought it.
That's all right.
So.
I apologize. These are, this is.
First quarter treasurer's report. For some of it's right.
Yeah.
Rory's like me. He's like, cuts and pastes.
Number nine down here.
Cuts and paste thing and then changes them as he goes along, but I bet that's one, cause I do the same.
You're in, that's all.
Oh, gosh. So what I do with my minutes, I cut and paste my old minutes and just go in and change them to the, my newest information. So I have the same structure when I do my minutes for things.
We invent the wheel.
Yes.
I hope it is.
No, well.
Cause there was only four more things on our agenda.
No, no, no. We are, we have, well, number twelve is adjourn, adjournment, so.
German?
A German, adjournment. I'm having sundown.
Sorry. Once that thing wakes up, I'll bring you a new one. I'm gonna give it a minute.
Yeah.
Sorry about that. I usually have your, I usually have your agendas, two, three meetings in advance about what's gonna come up. So it's, I'm sorry, I printed the wrong one. I said open on my computer and.
Some of it.
Yeah.
I'm sorry about that. So the next.
So.
Uh, didn't Rory said something? He can't be, he didn't want to come because he's so tired. Firefights, firefighting. One trip around. He just wanted to let everybody know that the, uh, junior, uh, firefighter is mustard, Zellwitz Scarborough on Sunday. And he took second place. And, uh, oh no, last Friday, the firefighter has, uh, brought twelve kids to school. Who did well in the coloring contest, maybe I just won it. And twenty-two firefighters responded to leads with that fire last night, some teenager ate a brush fire. And that's part where, of course, it's part of the fight. And, uh, tomorrow night, they'll be, uh, assisting auxiliary station with hamburgers and hot dogs and all that. And, and Justin.
Just get the copies.
Sorry, Ken. Thank you, Normans.
I apologize.
Sick.
I got the correct one. Sorry about that. Sorry. Something. Yeah, so I just, I just have a couple of items. So the, after talking with, um, Donna about the, um, revaluation, we had some conversations about, um, what we should do about our assessing software. So originally we were gonna move to a new software company. There's been some concern there, they're moving into Maine, but we were gonna be like the third one. And there's some concern about the bridge. So a bridge is the, it's a term for, it's a computer lingo term about how Trio, which is our, which is our tax billing software and how we register cars and all that, how it talks to the assessing software. And we're not convinced that they have that situated. So it makes us very nervous that if we move all the assessing information over here and it can't talk to the tax billing software, that sometime next year, we could be in a situation where we can't send out the bills without doing data entry. We had, the reason we went to this company in the first place, I think you, you, you may recollect this is that we had a lot of concern about moving to Vision eight. So Vision is a software that Monmouth has had for a long time. Vision eight has had a lot of issues, but there's been a lot of towns that have moved with Vision eight, um, and have worked out most of it. The biggest concerns are with the personal property modules, which is how we assess the, you know, personal property of businesses. We don't have a WOT here. Um, but the other communities that have moved forward with that have worked out. They, um, I went to the, um, assessing conference just a month or so ago, and the ones that were like the testers for Vision in Maine are convinced that it does the basics of what they need. It's not perfect for what they need, but they work in bigger communities like Camden, uh, Bar Harbor, um, Winslow, where they have a lot more personal property. And they think that it works, but good enough. So what we've decided is to go back to stay with our current vendor, upgrade from Vision six point five, which is three versions behind to version eight. Um, uh, I told Vision that we were moving to another company and they came back with a cost that was half of what the upgraded version, what it's gonna cost. So it's seven, seven thousand five hundred instead of fifteen thousand. They quoted us before. And the upgrade to the, and the change to the new vendor was gonna be twenty-five thousand. So in our revale contract, we can save from twenty-five thousand to seven thousand five hundred, if you're, if you're okay with this. It's an amendment to our revale contract, cause it was gonna be part of that process. The, the company that's doing our revale, they are Vision people. So they are more than happy to stay with Vision, cause this is, this is where they, they all worked at Vision before they broke off and created its company. So they know Vision inside and out. This is, this is their comfort level. So they are happy to do that. Um, I have a few things that, a little bit of that savings I'd like to use. I'd like to move us to CAI for our mapping company, instead of using the online mapping company that we have now. I would like to move that to CAI. I have a quote for three thousand dollars to move us now that we're already digitized. It's a, it's a, in my opinion, without disparaging our current vendor, it's a far superior product. It's excellent for updating our tax maps. They don't need Donna to draw rudimentary sketches on a piece of paper. You just send them the deeds and they have staff that can just plot it. Um, uh, it's a much better software package. A lot of communities in Maine, New Hampshire, Massachusetts, Connecticut, whatever, they all, they all use it. It's a New Hampshire based company. I'd like to use some of that savings to do that for the three thousand. Um, but other than that, I just need you to be okay with, with getting rid of moving to Patriot and staying with Vision. It's a contract amendment to the one that you already approved. So that's a, it's a twenty-five thousand dollar savings, uh, sort of. And then we're gonna spend seven thousand instead of twenty-five. And then, and then if you're okay, I'll spend three to move us to a new mapping software. So we'll be, you know, in the positive about ten grand in the end. If you're, if you're okay with that, um, that's my recommendation. It's Donna's recommendation as the assessor, um, too, and we'll stay with the same software package that we have now. So it'll look the same.
Is it, is it ten grand or fifteen grand? Twenty-five minus seven plus, uh, twenty-five plus seven plus three would be fifteen. Does that make sense?
Correct. So about a ten thousand dollar savings that will total, right? Cause it was twenty-five thousand to move to the new software. We're gonna spend seven thousand five hundred of the twenty-five to move, to upgrade Vision, and then we're gonna spend another three to do the mapping. We're gonna spend about ten of the twenty-five thousand, um, that would have been used to move to a completely separate.
Which would be a savings of fifteen thousand.
Yeah.
And, uh, when we do the upgrade, is this a one-time expense or is this a subscription?
Yes, so, so with, with, with either software, there's obviously a, there's an annual fee to, to deal with the software. We already pay the annual fee to Vision. Right now, it's about, it's about ten thousand dollars a year. It's built into the assessing budget. It won't cost anymore. I mean, it might, might be, it, it goes up a little bit every year.
Right.
But, but that part is the, the annual, um, fee is already built into our budget. So this is the, uh, the conversion and, uh, the conversion of both the assessing package and the mapping software will be, will come out of the, um, assessing revaluation reserve fund. So it's, it's not, it, it's money we already have. Does that answer your question?
So, uh, so the one-time fee was going to be twenty-five thousand to upgrade.
Right.
And now it's gonna turn out to be between a combination of these two, ten.
Correct.
And it's a one-time thing. And the subscription cost for, uh, the current vendor is unaffected.
That's right.
Makes sense to me.
A motion.
Yes, if you could.
So I make a motion to approve the changes to the assessing contract and stay with Vision.
Just to get rid of the.
Is this the outfit that runs Vision appraisal?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, KRT is our vendor for the revaluation. They, we were gonna, we were gonna, through that contract, we were gonna move to a company called Patriot Properties, which is a Massachusetts based testing program. We currently have Vision. So under, under this motion, you would be staying with Vision, but upgrading it from version six point five to eight.
Got you. Okay.
We'll stay with the same vendor, but we have to pay to move to their newest version of the, of the same product. It looks the same on a computer, but it's, it's much different on the backend. It's like right now Donna has to have a win, has, has, has to, she, she, she has actually a computer that's not on our network. It's a, a Windows, I think, eight point O, which is not supported. So that, so when we move to Vision eight, she will be able to have a Windows eleven supported by our IT vendor and secured and all of that. Right now it's not. It's completely separate from us because it's not, it's not a protectable. It, it's, it's so old that it can't be on our network. So we have to do something. You can pick one, but you have to pick one of them. We can't stay where we are.
I'll, I'll second Chris's motion.
Yes.
Uh, so Chris made a motion and, yeah, he seconded it to, uh, approve the, uh, change in the assessing or revaluation, uh,
Contract.
Contract. All those in favor? Thank you.
Um, the other thing I wanted to mention was that when, um, Linda was here and when we talked about building a solar project here in town, um, there was the, we, we purchased our power from a company called Constellation Energy, which is through Main Power Options. Linda did this. That contract has expired. Um, I have a, I wanted to let you know that I have a, I, I have renewed that contract and the contract that we have renewed based on that conversation is a green energy credit, um, um, electricity supplier. So the, to the electricity that we are paying, our supply is coming from solar and wind only. And we're paying an extra like two and a half cents a kilowatt for that. Um, but that was, that, um, I moved in, in that way because when the, when the decision was, was made by this board to not build our own solar panel, the discussion was also around that we already purchased our power from green energy suppliers, which was true. Linda did that. So that, that contract was up. So I renewed it for another twelve months. So if you would like to do, um, something different in the future, you can, but it's an extra two and a half cents. A, uh, a kilowatt hour, but all of, all of the power. So what, you know, however you feel on that issue, all of the power in the, the municipal buildings are purchasing is all from solar or wind power, um, sources. We're buying credits to purchase our electricity from those sources. So I just, I, I just wanted you to be aware of that.
I do that at home. I do that at home.
Yeah.
Okay. Next day up.
Next day. Yeah, ours is from, it's from a company called Constantly. They're, they're out of Texas, but essentially what we're doing is we're buying credits from wherever, but it, it has to do with, uh, we're buying the credits from wind and solar farms that could be anywhere in the country really, but we're, we're purchasing those rights to that power so that. But I just wanted you to know that.
Isn't made, actually.
Next day up.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, so, so Constellation is the bidder, is the, is the, uh, is the winner of the main power options, which is, which is a office of the, um, main bond bank. So the main bond bank, which is set up by the legislature that, that we buy fire trucks and stuff from, they have an office that it's out fuel. It's, it's, it's also how we, we, we group bid our oil and gas and diesel purchases. They also do electricity. So we purchase through them and, um, so we get basically a bulk bid, a municipal price for our electricity and, and by choosing to do that, we, we get it, you know, so it's solar and wind only. So that's where all our municipal power is coming from. Normal sources.
I thought her, her head started it.
Okay, maybe she did. I know that Linda re, re-upped it at some point. So, but I, I didn't know it went back that far.
You can do it.
Okay. Think that's all that I wanted to make sure that I talked to you about. If anybody has any questions, obviously, I'm. Thank you, Raj.
So that's it for department reports? Or select board reports?
I've had a couple of people ask about the, the water main project, if they have a projected finish date. Um, dealing with the traffic lights is becoming a real issue. Um, sitting on Blue Road for three cycles of lights because once the main street traffic goes, Blue Road has to wait till all those cars clear. And if it's when schools letting out, the line is so long and there's no the lights only work on a timer and, um, it's kind of a nightmare at certain times of day. I don't know if there's.
They posted a, um, there's a.
Project schedule.
Project schedule on this town website.
Yeah, pretty soon they will wrap up for the year, but it is not supposed to be done till next fall. So when the spring comes around, it'll start up again and it will go according to the schedule that goes all the way, I think till next September.
Yeah.
So all next summer, you should expect delays or.
And they should be paving probably before the fifteenth.
Right, to cover up the holes.
For, you know.
For winter.
So they should be.
Pretty quick. They should be out of here forward now.
Yeah.
But they will be back.
And then it'll go from the other side of the tracks to Smith's Farm, so.
Which also goes for the, you know, the controversy about the sign. That's also part of that, cause that sign will be up until next fall.
Yeah.
So, um, the, the covering on the sign, I believe, a- according to the person who covered it, is gonna take it off on election night at eight oh one PM. And so it will be, it will be uncovered again. And then it's supposed to be there until the fall, which is, you know, to be perfectly honest, the reason that it's there is, is my fault. They wanted to put it in front of Comston Hall. I like, people like to take pictures in front of Comston Hall. It's a beautiful building. I didn't want it in front of Comston Hall. So this was, this was my compromise and I made a mistake. When I, when I came to you at the last meeting, I asked the town clerk about what was considered a polling place. She said that the, this was the polling place, which she filled out to the form. That was inaccurate information. I will take, I will, I will take blame for that. Um, it is wherever you, the Secretary of State considers any place where you do absentee voting also to be the polling place, even though it's not what we filled out on the form. So the information I gave you was wrong. So I apologize. The town hall is considered a polling place. I measured the sign, as I told you in my email, it's a hundred and eighty feet from the box. So it's two, two hundred fifty feet is state law. So I have to talk to the town attorney. If it's within two hundred and fifty feet of the box, it becomes the purview of the Secretary of State and her suggestion was out of an abundance of caution to keep the Secretary of State out of it, was to cover it. So that's why it's covered right now. I asked the water district to cover the sign. So that's the, that's the entirety of that. So I have, I'm sorry that I gave you bad information at your last meeting. I did not realize. Um, but I just want, I wanna admit that in public that it was, it's my, it's my mistake.
I think the only reason most people have noticed is because Berry Road's getting used all the time now to get around the center of town. And if you're driving by, you never look at the sign, but if you're sitting on Berry Road, then you see it. And that's the only reason I saw it, because I've been using Berry Road, so.
Um, I also had, um, a business owner on Route two oh two in the intersection of one thirty-two asked about, um, forty-five mile an hour speed limit on two oh two from roughly Hall's Collision Center down over the hill to Phil's. Um, I know that's a state thing. I don't know if there's any recommendations to town, the right channels to go through, but the number of accidents that are in that zone are significant. Um, and the light doesn't seem to have occurred that a whole lot. Um,
Wait, you, um, the town, um, can make requests to DOT. It is, it is their decision, but if you, if you as a body, uh, submit a request to DOT, they will do a study. They will put those little things across the, the road and they will figure it out. Um, and then they have their own standards, which we have no input on. But if you request a speed study, they will do it eventually. It doesn't usually take them that long. I mean, I'm not trying to say that it was gonna take them five years, if it doesn't. They will do it, but, um, they have to do their own study. There are, there are laws and rules about how they affect.
So we can, we can ask.
Yes.
Again, we've already done that probably three or four years ago, when we had numerous, we had a couple of repetitive accidents there.
Before the light.
What's that?
The study was done before the light.
Hmm. And, uh, the, the, there are certain, uh, minimum standards for, you know, line of sight based on speed.
Correct.
And that intersection doesn't meet their current standards. It met the standards from, you know, nineteen fifty-five. Um, uh, there's also been unwillingness for them to consider lowering the speed limit because it's a major artery. So they're not, they're not in a hurry to do that, but we could, we could ask them again and.
Adding in the dollar general and the amount of traffic that's getting out of there and people turning and, um, it's, it's a hazard.
Oh, I have been there, done that. What's the speed there now?
Fifty-five.
Oh, yeah. And that. Fifty-five from basically Charlie, right below where, where the, uh, right on the other side of the Charlie's thing from there out is fifty-five all the way to Lewiston, basically.
Yeah.
Yeah. Which results in sixty-two.
Sixty-eighties. Chief says a hundred sometimes.
Of course, the guardrail they've got on the, uh, southern side, when you're looking, you know, if you come in, if you're on one thirty-two, looking left to see if you can make the turn, there's a guardrail right there that actually blocks what you can see when cars are coming up over that, that hole, that knoll, right? Which is kind of the thing you need to see.
Of course, coming out of Lysdale.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So little forty-five section in Winthrop. On, uh, door two.
Right between, like now, now, basically.
Apparently Winthrop has more cloud than Monmouth.
Considering that chief head of the DOT lives in Winthrop.
Oh, well, maybe that's it. Maybe we just need to get him to move to Monmouth.
Wouldn't hurt to ask. Yeah, sure. So if you want to, I would just, I would just ask you to, you know, make a motion.
I make a motion, we, uh, instruct the town manager to ask for a speed study at the intersection of one thirty-two and two oh two.
Okay.
So the motion by ten and a second by Mark to, uh, have the, the, uh, town manager request a speed study for two oh two in that area. All those in favor?
Thank you. Hey, while we're on the topic of DOT.
That will let me give, that, that will let my letter say that the board has requested, you know, a little more than just. Can you come, can you come look at this?
Yeah, right. While we're on the topic of DOT, have we heard anything about progress on the Wagon Bridge project? Recently? Wagon Bridge replacement?
No, no. And it's, it's also the same thing with, uh, down near Chris's house over there and also Main Street. I've heard nothing.
Nothing.
Nothing. I reached out recently to the last, um, engineer that, um, one of the the DOT engineers for Main Street just two weeks ago, and I haven't heard anything yet. Just, just that's about Main Street because right, for our planning purposes, I wanna know when we need the money to do the sidewalks and stuff.
Right.
You know, moving into budget season, cause just about next month, I'm gonna give the, you have the budget schedule on here if you approve it, but I need, I need my department heads to know what the priorities are. And obviously when they do that, that's the priority. So, uh, but I haven't, no, I've heard nothing.
Any, any, uh, more, any more, uh, slideboard reports?
Had a meeting of the trails committee, um, earlier this week. And, uh, their consultant that we authorized at our last meeting, thank you for that, um, uh, had, has done a couple of days of site visits, walked the trails, um, mostly, most of the time we spent on the trail that would be behind the school. Mostly, most of the time we spent on the trail that would be behind the school. Here and then also spent some time. Over at the Trail System. That's over at Frederickson's Tree Farm. So, and around Chris's house, it kind of connects all of that together. So, site visit's done. Lots of volunteer work. Happening with trail maintenance in terms of. Of various systems around and also some outreach happening to some property owners. For potential. Network connections.
There was nothing to have to do with the Woodyer Woods Trails or. The. Bird Sanctuary Trails or.
Well, we've got them on the radar screen, nothing that would necessarily connect them. I know there was. A little bit of discussion on. Some work that was done at Woodyer Woods during the Day of Caring. And then. Some discussion at the Bird Sanctuary simply because. They're pretty restricted over there and connecting to the Bird Sanctuary Trails. Would be difficult for multi-use trail because you would go to a dead end and not be able to. Unless you were walking quietly with no dogs. You would not be able to go into the bird sanctuary, so it'd be sort of a dead end down, down there. But we do have some adjacent property owners that are, are interested. Some potential.
There was talk at one time of connecting. The Comacy Camp. Trails with the Woodyer Woods Trails. I don't know if that's ever.
Haven't heard that one.
Well, Joe Pedrowski, he's a county commissioner, he had planned to attend tonight. And make a public comment.
Maybe that's Joe.
That's him out there, Joe.
Joe, are you there?
Thought maybe that was you. I didn't know if you were back in Arizona again hiking somewhere.
The other Joe.
Joe, is there a Joe Club? Commissioner Joe?
Okay, well, he. I got a message that he had a health problem and he's unable to attend tonight. When we met with the county, when I met with the county, one of the concerns was that. We get a bill from them and we never hear from them otherwise, and so they're going to try to. Keep better contact with, with the town boards. Onto public comment? Charles?
They're down handing out candy at Comston Hall tomorrow. Oh. Kurt, Kurt Parkman's mom died today. She had had some health problems and he's been dealing with it for a while, but she did die today, so.
Okay.
We're.
You're short, the chief and now Trump.
So we're, we're kind of scrambling and filling in and whatever, and we'll get it done.
What happens, the trunk, the trunk or treat at Comston?
Well, it's not a trunk or treat. It's, we, we just kind of. Set up a table in front of Comston to go along with all the hordes of people that come for the fire department. But I did have contact actually with. Charlene from the credit union. She called and I don't know who she had tried to call, but when I, I dealt with her before with Community Night at whatever. So when I answered, she's like, oh, good, it's a person. So I was like, yeah. So she's like, we want to set up, they, they've done it before. She says, and I'm trying to let somebody know, she says, but I don't know who to call. She says, are you doing it? Yes. She says, who'd you contact? I says, I'm just doing it like that. But I in turn did contact Dennis and I did let him know that. We would be there again and she would be there and we'll have, one of the cruisers will be there and we are planning on having a cruiser down. Either, I'm not sure if they've decided yet, either by the post office or by the Masonic Lodge. We needed to get one there with the lights on and it just helps kind of slow people down for all the kids. And we're kind of expecting it to be busy since it's supposed to be nice.
Oh, it's supposed to be beautiful.
Smokey suits under your costume.
Yeah, it's kind of really nice.
Was there an event closed down because of heat, lack of heat? Did I read that?
An event?
No, they closed the library. The library is closed down because they were starting the new heating system up.
Yeah, I should, I should mention that the. The, the heat is on at Comston Hall. It's back heated today. Everything is working fine. The, the. Weather tight activities have already happened. The. New boiler is in there, the heat pumps are out back, everything is. Everything is going slick down there, so. There was a, there was about a month, but there was no heat, so for, so like on. Wednesday, Monday, it was cold. Julie chose not to open the library. It was only about fifty two degrees in the library, so she chose not to open the library that day. I, I let her decide that. But the heat came on yesterday and it was seventy degrees in there at nine o'clock in the morning, like everything is working wonderful. So we have the, the new systems are operational down there. Everything's going good. Dennis, I should have said Dennis sent out an email today, which I forwarded to a few people I called. I called Donna when she wasn't working, which I appreciate she answers her phone when I call her when she's not working. But Dennis sent out the first email to request the submissions for the. The new newsletter. He's hoping that that'll go out on January sixth, so any committee. I tried to forward it to the ones that he didn't know about, so I sent it to. I sent it, I called Donna about the Snowbell Club because I don't know who to call about the Snowbell Club, so I wanted to make sure they had the opportunity. But I forwarded it to other people that I could think of. The H Friendly Committee wasn't included on his email, so I made sure I forwarded that. So if any of you want anybody to have that and you don't think your group got it, I forwarded it to you. To try to give it to somebody at the Sportsman's Club. In case you guys want to put something in there. Because you're my person that I know that is part of that. Yeah, you're, oh, you're the president. I didn't, I didn't know it. Okay, so anyway. I tried to think of who, who could be the person to do it, but if you have other groups, feel free to forward that to whoever that you think. There are rules based on the policy that you had, so, you know, town departments and town. Sanction groups get a full page and the other, the other civic groups get a half a page, so. But anybody that you want to put anything in there, and obviously you as a board get to. Put in a select board page or something, so you need to work that. You know, is Doug going to write it for you or does he have anything to say? That's up for you guys to determine. I'm not, I'm not getting in the middle of that. You can fight it out. But, but that's, that's going to go out there and I think he's looking for submissions. I think it was like sometime in mid-December. They wanted to see that and he's going to put it together with the graphics, if you've got pictures and all that stuff. This is, Dennis is going to put this together for us. It's. Part of an arrangement with, with his job description, so we're, we're going to pay him a little more to help us with this thing. So I just wanted to throw that out there too in the public, so if you have anything to say, you can. If you feel, please feel free to submit that to him or, or to me and I'll get it to him, but whatever works best for you. Excuse me, sorry.
The social policy. Media. Ordinance that were, what happened to that?
So you folks tabled it, so it's not in effect. The, the, the attorney from our town's firm. Paige, who was the one that edited it, will be available at your next meeting. At six o'clock, so she will be here for your next meeting, so. Tonight, I would just suggest you don't do anything with it. Let's leave it. It doesn't exist at the moment. And then you can, you can have any conversation you want with her at that time. I'll put her right at the front of the meeting, so we don't have to pay her to. Right, Joe? Lawyers are expensive.
Yes, and worth it. You're not going to run again. Okay, so, on that.
No, we got something else.
Onto consider a, a draft consent judgment with Angeline Pepper. Property located. On Anderson Road. In reference to code violations.
So. When I put this on the agenda. It was something that you, that we needed you to. Decide on. At this point, I'm going to completely leave it in your hands, so. The issue is, is she has agreed to make the modifications like we've tried to do all along. It took, it took moving. This to this point to get her to engage with us. She is engaging now. She has. She is going, she has, I don't know if she has, but she was going to submit a plumbing permit. To connect her thing. She does not want to deal with our code enforcement officer, which is not necessary. She can do third-party inspector on the. Plumbing connection, whatever. That's not an issue. This, this idea basically gives her, I think it was until March first, twenty twenty five. The lawyer's been going back and forth with her and she is convinced that she's going to get it done in the next couple of weeks. I, I believe that she is going to. If you want to, if you want to hold her feet to the fire so we don't have to start over again. You can approve of this consent agreement and then it's basically just going to say that she has to get her plumbing hooked up by March first of next year. And that it will be, you know, approved by whoever can approve it. And that it will then be a habitable residence under the. Moveback code. So. I still think that's a good idea for you, you folks to, to authorize me to, to. Approve this, just to make sure that she follows through, because right now, if she doesn't. We have, we have a, we have a secondary court date. I think it's, it's either Friday of this week or Monday of next week. I can't remember exactly. And currently, the town attorney is suggesting that we. Ask them for a continuance because she seems like she's going to do it without having to go through all this. We're going to put a lien against her property for the. Court costs. It doesn't appear that she has the. The, the means to pay. The town's court costs, so, so our, our, our position was we will just. Put it against her property. And leave it be. We won't, we won't take any enforcement action to try to get those. Attorneys fees back, although they will be put on a lien against her property, so if she ever goes to sell it or someday in the future, the town will get its money back, but. In, in our opinion, it doesn't, it doesn't seem the right thing to do to go after somebody that doesn't really have the means to pay it. So that's kind of where this, that's where this thing goes, so we're, we're just, we're asking for her to complete the, the work by March first, twenty twenty five. Get a. Get a, a permit. To connect her sewer and her water up. To what is required under the building code. And especially what we're asking you to consider tonight. And it has to be done in public, so I'm not, I'm not doing this to try to embarrass anybody, but like if you're going to, if you're going to enforce a. An order like this, this is not a confidential matter anymore. The, the document is here, the public is, is entitled to know that you're doing this.
So I make a motion that we authorize the town manager to approve the draft consent judgment. Negotiated with. The property owner at one thirty nine Anderson Road.
I'll second that.
So can we have some discussion though? I see the draft. On the, on the caption that needs correction. Under state of Maine, it should say. Pennaback assets. Not Somerset.
Where, where is that?
In the caption, it says state of Maine.
Oh, okay, yep, 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 I see it, yeah, I see it. It says, it's tracked down below.
We have you on the board.
Yes. The proofread.
Yep, very good. It's correct in point one, but you're right, it's wrong at the top.
Yeah, it seems like. A reasonable solution.
And the, and the idea is, is that. Ben, who's the, who's the attorney you met with before. He has, he's made it very clear that we don't have any interest in, in trying to be punitive to you. We just want you to comply with. She can make. These changes that we're just going to leave it be, and he's made it very clear that we're not, we're not coming after you for. Legal fees, but, but on, on behalf of the town, the town has spent money to do this because you wouldn't comply with the code officer. So we are going to file. Leans against your property for this, that at some point. The taxpayers will be recouped for. Your inaction, so that's. You know, we've tried to make this kind of, we've tried to work with her all along, but she was just unwilling to even respond to any of the notices.
Do we have a sense of what the? Man, I don't know that you need to be dollar specific, but the scale of the legal.
We think we're two to three thousand dollar range in fees at this point. Between court filing and legal fees that have gone into doing it. Not huge.
Nothing in the draft says that the town gets costs and attorney fees. I see.
No, I don't think, I don't, I don't think that it actually does.
It should say that.
I think that it's, I, I think in the. So maybe. It, when it, when it goes in here. I think. Potentially, it, it does say that if they don't, if they don't comply, there's a two thousand dollar. Civil penalty. That's listed in there.
They don't comply, but. I think. Vision should be added that says. That the town's entitled to attorney's fees and costs.
Okay, that's fine. I think that that is in the, I think that is, that has been filed in the, in the. In the. In the court, like when we filed the complaint.
Yeah, we asked for it, but the judgment doesn't say.
Correct.
It's filed by the, unless it's in the, in the, in the judgment. We don't get costs and attorney's fees.
You are correct, so we, that is. If you all would like that, that is something that we can do. I know that Ben was. He tends to be a little more sympathetic than some others, but.
I mean. That's what you.
That's not my judgment. I don't mean to, I'm, I'm just, I'm just telling you where he comes from. So certainly you folks can do it. It, it's your money. Who paid for this.
Yeah, I heard you say, you know, if she were to sell this property later. We would recoup attorney's fees and costs. But without this specifically saying. We don't get that.
Okay. I'm not a lawyer, so I don't, I don't know.
It's in our ordinance and then it's the main civil rules book, so it's. It, it, it has to be in the judge's.
It has to be in the decision.
It has to be in the judge's decision, because that's, that's what we're, that's what you're feeling, that's what you're doing this for.
Yeah.
And this does say that it did go for rule A D B for the main rules of civil procedure, so. The civil procedure is being followed. Which means that we gave attorney's fee.
Yes.
On the first page on the bottom. So I think you're covered either way, but ask them, just to make sure that you're.
There certainly would be no harm if we specified.
Yeah.
Right, and if that's, if that's what you folks all want, that's why it's in front of you. You guys can decide. Completely disagree with the whole thing. You can do whatever you want. It's your. It's against the court, it's your choice.
I'll amend my motion to include the correction to the. What did you?
The caption.
The caption and. And a provision that specifies in the consent decree that we're going to recover court costs. Based on lien.
I did, he is aware of the, of the court costs. I just, I just want to say that out loud. Like, it's, it's not that it passed his mind, I just. I don't know the legalese about whether it's already included somewhere else or. or not. You know, I'll take the lawyers. The lawyer at the table, I will surely defer to him before I will pass judgment. But he is aware that, he doesn't think that we would ever get them, but he, he does know that it was something to be concerned of. So, so with that included, can I just clarify, do you want to see it again? Or with those amendments, is it okay if I sign the thing, if we can come to an agreement with her?
Oh, no, I think you should be able to sign it.
Okay, I just, yeah, I just, I just want to make sure.
Yep, and I'll second Kent's amended motion.
Okay, Kent made a motion. Chris says seconded the amended motion. And so therefore, with those amendments, we we ask that the, or we approve that the town manager sign the graph, the, the draft consent judgment. Or sign the consent judgment with the lady on Anderson Road. Okay. All those in favor? Thank you. Next is consider a draft budget schedule.
This whole annual AI.
Put it on the back.
You'd like me to make copies? Okay.
You want.
If I want to see it, you want to pack it?
It's in the package.
In the package. Yeah. If you'd like, I can make one if you want.
Yes, that'd be great. Make it, go ahead.
I'll just get her.
So, starting at the, I'm starting at the department head meeting, which is usually a second Tuesday of my, I think it's maybe the third Tuesday of the month, this month, because Tony's wife is gonna have rotated cuff surgery on her dominant hand, like always. So he was supposed to go to Florida to go play golf, but he's staying home too. Nursemaid, his wife, so he's going to do that. So in November, it will go to the department heads, the end, the middle of December, they would, they would, they will make meetings with me to go through those. And then whatever discrepancies we have, we'll try to amend those before we bring that budget to you at your first meeting in January. It's the plan. And the second meeting, so that would be the total budget as presented from everybody at that first meeting in January. You would have your individual meetings with public safety, police, fire and ambulance, which is really a police and fire chief on January 22nd. Your meeting, their next meeting on February 5th would be Public Works, Recreation and Culture. So that's all library, recreation and Public Works would be all that meeting. Thank you. Appreciate it. You'd have another opportunity on March 5th to any, 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 any input you gave us at any of those other meetings, we would try to make those changes over the next month. At that March 5th meeting, you'd have the total budget. But in front of you at that point, we generally have all of the information we need from the schools, the county, well, not, not always the school. But the county and the, the water district and all the other people will usually know by then what the water bills are going to be, the sewer and all that, usually they know by then. Your public hearing would be at your next meeting in March, in March 19th. And then because we don't have an open town meeting and we have to vote by referendum, you'd have to approve the budget by April 2nd. And sign the warrant at that point so that Jessica could post the warrant. If there's anything else that you would like, if there's anything you want to change in that schedule, that's.
What is the date of the vote?
In June. I don't know. Hold on.
Has to be 60 days within, 60 days prior to the date of the vote.
Correct. One second. So I think state election is June. I think it's June 10th.
Sounds right. Second Tuesday, right?
With this budget thing, if those that weren't included in Dennis's email that went out today, he's made it clear that the April edition of the newsletter is going to include budget information. So he's, he's looking, he'll be looking for probably a letter from, you know, Doug or the board to explain about what your priorities are and all that stuff. They'll also give the opportunity for department heads to explain why they need a new police cruiser or whatever. So that stuff will all go out in April, probably sort of corresponding with your approval of the budget at that point. So our hope is that, and then from the feedback we got last year, from the past budget cycles, I think that it will be important for, once you approve the budget, once we get at that, at March 19th date, if you, whatever instruction you give me at that point will instruct me on how to draft the explanations that I think are necessary under the warrant articles. So when it says, will you approve a three-year lease for a, let's just say a police cruiser, the explanation will say something like, it has 175,000 miles on it, it's a 2016, and it needs to be replaced. Right? Like, we're gonna, we're gonna put that information to the voters so that they're not operating in the blind. And, and then they can make their own decisions about that. But I think we all agree that those explanations are going to be important moving forward. And I think that some of that can be included in the newsletter that goes out in early April from the department heads themselves, and let them pitch their own things. So if Tony needs a new plow truck or, you know, I'm picking on the police chief because he doesn't mind. He's moose hunting. He's having a great time this week, so I might as well throw him under the bus, right? But I think all these things together, I think we're going to just try to push more information to the voters so that they're more informed about the decisions that you're, you're all making here. And if there's any information that you want me to impart on the department heads, it probably won't be 11, it probably won't be the 12th, because Tony can't be here, and he's, he's an integral part of my team to make decisions about where the budget's going to go. So we're probably going to push it back to like the 19th of November, which is like the following Tuesday. But if there's anything that you want me to impart on the department heads, now would be a good time, so I can start them right off at the bat, like what they're, to manage their expectations.
Well, I think Mark mentioned an important feature in our last meeting, which was to find at least at the department head recommendation, to find a couple percentage points of savings in each department. And, and to give us options if, if, you know, folks feel strongly that they have some additional expenses that is a want and not a need. They can bring that to our attention. But to start with a budget that has a two percentage point reduction in our existing situation, it makes, makes a lot of sense.
So if we're, if we're, if we're moving in that, in that regard, which is completely up to you, are, are you, are you open to reduction in services? Because if I was going to do, let's say, let's just take Public Works, for example, the, the, the most reasonable way to do that would be to like eliminate either a day, either close the transfer station a day, or to eliminate like commercial waste collection. Right? And we can do that all day long. But like, are those the big ideas that you want us to put in front of you to try to reduce costs? Or, or, or would you prefer us to kind of nibble around the edges? I'm just asking for, for direction.
I mean, I, I, I think we need to know the cost and benefit of, of both. Okay, right? So if, you know, if it's, we shift to winter hours a little bit sooner. I'd be willing to think about that.
It's, it's, it starts next week. Yes. Starts next week when the time changes.
Right.
If it's. I thought we'd already, because somebody told me that the transfer station wasn't open on Tuesday anymore.
The transfer station hours changed a few weeks ago, but I think we're talking about the Public Works, their 10-hour days versus their eight-hour days.
Right, they flip like next, I think it's next.
Sure.
Yes.
I think we have one more week in there. I'd be open to, to exploring that. I'd also be open to exploring, you know, what kind of costs we can squeeze on the transfer station services if, you know, if we're subsidizing waste disposal for contractors who essentially get free disposal of construction debris. You know, maybe that's something we should explore. So, open to suggestions on the different, I mean, it seems to me like even the police chief is talking about this sort of administrative potential for merging two departments. And some potential better supervision as a result. And so if it's better supervision, or it's the same supervision, but costing each town somewhat less, then okay. Let's, let's, let's see where that comes out. But I, I, you know, if we're going to, it, it, it seems to me two things. We need to be, we need to be sharp on a municipal side in terms of the way that we budget. And we can do that so that when we go to the school and we say, you guys need to be sharp on your budgets. This is not, you know, it seems to me like 65% of our bill that we send out is RSU 2. And for us to go to them and say, hmm, you guys need to sharpen your pencils, when we haven't, when, when there's still opportunities for us to do the same, doesn't come across as effectively.
If the RSU could cut 2%, that would be huge.
That would be huge.
And the, and, and just so you know, the legislature passed the minimum salary for ed techs, which goes into effect next year.
Sure.
So the schools are going to be up against it next year, because they're going to have to, they, they're going to have to pay their ed techs the state minimum. So we are, you know, most likely, unless, unless something else goes away, we are looking at an increase from the school department.
Or, or unless the state steps up and says we're gonna we're gonna continue to fund at 55%, even when there's an inflationary increase of six or eight percent per year because of labor costs.
Correct.
So if the state doesn't do that, I mean, when you look at RSU 2 and our funding model, you know, it's basically been flat funded at, at, you know, 17, 18 million dollars for the last eight years. So there's a reason why, you know, they, they've been asking for consistent increases that are above and beyond inflation. It's because the state doesn't keep up with the additional costs. So I, we need to be smart. I don't think we're, we're not asking to cut to the bone, but we're asking folks to come up with some ideas.
Fair enough. And I just, on a, on a, on a little bit of a slide, I meant to mention it during my report. So this is going to be on Friday, so it's going to be on my day off. Yay. The, the governor has appointed me to the Governor's Commission on School Construction. And that only happened because the MMA president didn't want to do it, so she handed it down to me as the vice president. So I get to go to three-hour meetings on Fridays now to deal with how we're going to pay for new school buildings. So sure, all I wanted you to know is that's just something that if you, if you see it out there, like, I'm, I'm going to be doing that too. But I just wanted you to.
Congratulations.
Now that, yeah, right. But anyway.
And I think the other thing that we've talked about several times is how we envision the recreation program working. If we're doing all this work with trails and and if this new community does happen, what kind of recreation opportunities are we going to have and have available? And how do we envision the rec working? So that's something we have to think about. And the other thing that I think that I would like to see, you know, the cost benefit of having a assault structure. So if Tony puts together a number, that's obviously going to be a lot different than last year's or this year's number that we voted on. What the benefit is and how you actually end up saving money by going to salt priority, because you're not sweeping the streets and you're not renting a, a street sweeper, and you're not having to ditch and remove the sand and clean up the sand. So the cost benefit of that. So that's something that I, I would like to see a number for assault building and to make a decision about whether we want to put that out there and how it does end up saving money in the long run. So I think that, that, those two things I'd like to, to see.
Yeah, I think it's, it's important if you, if you make decisions to, to really be like, you know, strict on the line with spending, which is, you know, it's, it's obviously, this is this is, this is your role to decide this. We also cannot, after the budget is passed, we cannot be entertaining, you know, two residents from such and such a street saying that their road is now the priority. Like, you all need to stick together and say, nope, we held the line on the taxes this year. We're not putting new gravel on Perkins Road. We're not putting new gravel on Peace Road. Like, these things cannot happen. Like, we cannot, we cannot hold spending and then do everything for everybody. So let's just, if we can just all get together on that, if it, if this is the, if this is the role you want to go, you all, you also have to stick together after the fact. And you have to be able to tell people when they show up here, no, because there's no money, right? Like, we can only do what we can do with the money that we have. We can't solve everybody's problem if we're going to hold the line, right? Like, we're gonna, we're gonna do it. We need to, if, if the, if keeping the taxes are stable is the priority, that is fine. We also have to be able to tell people, no, after the fact. We can't, our priorities can't change every five minutes because somebody shows up in this room on a Wednesday night. So as long as we can all stick together, you know, you as the board, myself, Tony, the police chief, everybody, like, we all have to be in it together if we're going to do that. Like, we can't, we can't veer all over the place, because otherwise, we're, we're not going to do anything right. We're going to do everything poorly. So the stuff that we do fund, we have to do correctly. And, and the stuff that we don't want to do, we have to all stick together and have a unified front that we chose to, we chose to control taxes at the expense of we can't help you this year. Come next year to the next budget, and we'll talk about it then. So that's, that's my only, that's my only advice. We just, we have to stick together as a team and make sure that we're all, you know, rowing the boat in the same direction.
And if we cut services, like reduce hours at the transfer station, we know how that will be received when people are used to having one thing and.
Right. We just have to know that if that, that's, if that's what we want to do, we just have to accept the criticism and stick together would be my, that's my advice anyway.
And I agree with everything you just said. But it's also a revale year. And you remember what happened 10 years ago with the Gold Coast?
Yeah.
You know, that, that went crazy down on that lake. You know, everybody got their taxes cut. Well, that's, everybody that I've been talking to has said, you know, we've already gone up 1,500, $2,000. We can't go up another penny. So with a revale, half of us are going to go up, and the other half of us are going to go down. So we have to be very cognizant of who's paying what where. You know, when you, when you go and do your budget. And that all goes into effect with paving roads and, you know, repairing this and repairing that. You know, the ones that taxes go up are going to be in here wanting, wanting, wanting. That's that's human nature.
Right. To lay on that, I've already, I've, I've already told all the department heads, this is a revale year. Don't, don't be dreaming. But it needs to be, like, we are, we gotta hope, because all of your stuff that you lay at the foot. all of your stuff that you lay at the foot of the taxpayer is gonna come back on me and Donna. And Donna's only here two days a month, which means that I have to deal with it. So it's not happening. So let's just stop your dreaming, but, but there, but there, there are things like the, the police cruiser that got shot down in the last budget. That cruiser needs to be replaced. It's gonna have a hundred and eighty thousand miles on it. It's a two thousand and sixteen. It is not fit for the road anymore. So there are certain things. Tony has a list a mile long that we're gonna have to, that, that you people are all gonna deal with. There are compactors at the transfer station that are failing. Like, Dan said that when he was here before Tony, they are done. Those things are two hundred thousand dollars apiece. Like, there are real choices that are gonna have to be made about what our capacity is, how much stuff we can do. But, you know, but there are real needs. There are, there are, there's a public works truck. It's two thousand and six. It's got, it is beyond useful life by ten years. And they're still driving it down the road.
And they're gonna plow with it.
Right, this year again. I mean, it's just, it's just, there's a lot of stuff. And we have no capacity. We have, we don't have any reserve funds because we haven't been doing that. We don't have the capacity to raise the taxes on people. So there are just gonna be some hard choices. And I have told the department heads, I need to make those hard choices and only present you with the bare minimum of what you need to pick from. Stop throwing everything in the kitchen sink at them and hoping they pick what you want, because it's not, it can't happen anymore. I've heard it. You've heard it, right? This year, we've all heard it. Enough's enough. But we have to get, we have to get to a place where this stuff is more reliable. And I think we have to start with, uh, baby steps with reserve funds and starting to put a little bit of money away for public works vehicles and police cruisers and stuff. But it's hard when we have all this debt service right over here at the same time, right? But we have to make this transition, I think, from, from either dumping it on the tax rate or borrowing it to saving for it and paying for it when we need it. But it's, it's hard to make that transition because you still have the legacy stuff, right, that we need and that we already are paying for. And then to move to the new stuff that we need to buy that, but we're already, but we're still paying for the old stuff, right? So there's a.
The amount of interest we pay on those loans every year would buy a lot of stuff.
Yeah, yeah, you're, you're correct. It's like four, what, it's four hundred thousand in principal and three hundred or two hundred fifty thousand in interest. You buy a couple of dump trucks for that every year with the interest of paying. Right, but I mean, but at the same time, at the time that you needed it, you didn't have the money. So I don't, you know, there's not, there's not a silver bullet. It's a, it's a difficult transition, but I think that when we move into this budget, we're gonna be, I'm trying to get the unions. I requested two months ago for the unions to get together. The, the final union internal meeting is November first. The police offices are meeting, what's that, Friday?
Friday, Friday.
So they're meeting Friday. And then after that, the union guy, because I wanted to get ahead of this so that I had some idea. Instead of just setting a part of money aside in the budget to deal with contingency, I'd like to know what it actually is. You, you folks will all have, obviously you get to decide that contract, so you will decide exactly what this is. But I wanted it to be in front of you before you approve a budget, not just this. It might be, you know, between three and five percent, right? Like, I'd rather you know exactly what it is, so we don't have to raise more money than we need from the taxpayers. Does that?
I get it.
Does that make any sense?
Absolutely. Okay, yep.
I'm not trying to lecture you. I hope you don't, you don't feel like that. I'm just, I'm trying to, I'm just trying to manage uh, the expectations of, of you folks, staff, and the department heads about like, you know, what, what should they be asking for? What are, what are your expected? And I hope that when we, when we bring this to you on, on the, that first meeting in January, I'm hoping that I can get some sense from you folks about like, does this number seem reasonable or is it just, I need you all to speak up, like, if it's, you know, a seven percent increase or something. No, go back there and make them cut it. That's what I, that's what I need someone here to say. I work for you. You tell me what to do and I will make, I will, I will squeeze blood out of that turnip. I'm telling you. I just need to know.
You know, and we're lucky that nobody comes to or reports on our meetings and it's not hollow. Well, whatever the, what's happening, how people are feeling, it's there. I mean, it's, we don't wanna have to be that town. But I mean, every town's facing it and it's all, comes down to what do we want to provide for services? And needs and wants and where the priorities are. And what people ask for and what we can provide. And we have a lot of new people that have moved to this town that have expectations about what they should have. And what we can provide are two totally different things, I think, so.
It's, it's, it's definitely a difficult balance. There's no harder job than, than you folks have, right? Because when you, you just move one, one step above, right? You go to the, go to the, the state, right?
Yeah.
You can kinda hide behind your party affiliation and all that. But when you're, when you're at the local level, all that stuff goes away because it's like, do you want someone to plow your road or not? Right, right, right? I mean, it's just, it doesn't matter.
We can tell the RSU that we want them to hold the line and that the state should be funding at this level, but it's which pocket are you taking it from? So if the state funds it at this level, it's coming out of this pocket. And if the RSU is funding it, it's coming out of, it's all our money. It's not coming from some magic tree making it. It's all our money. It's just coming out of one pocket or the other. The one that's really visible here in the town or the one that when we do our state taxes, it comes out of that pocket. It's all the same money.
Well, it's all the same money, Chris. I agree, I agree with that. I think the problem with property taxes is that there's no relationship in a property tax with ability to pay. Like, when you're paying a sales tax or you're paying an income tax, there's a relationship to ability for someone to afford stuff. With a property tax, on the other hand, you are a slave to the real estate market and you're paying capital gains before you gain them. Right? I mean, that's, and, and it's not just billionaires you're talking about. It's little people who maybe they're already retired and they can't afford, or they can't physically work more to actually pay it. And that's, you know, the rock and a hard place with being on this board. Right? Is that we're our funding source. And that's also the rock and a hard place with the twenty-five percent of the budget that we control, right? That we have to bill for is only twenty-five percent. So in fact, one of the suggestions I would have, yeah, that you and I've talked about, Justin, is that we reformulate the bill. So that when we send out a bill, we're not, we're not sending out the town of Monmouth's bill. We're sending out the bill for the RSU two, the bill for the county, and oh yeah, twenty-five percent goes to, for the town of Monmouth. You can make your checks out to town of Monmouth, but let's, let's put this in perspective. Oh, and the water, the, the, the watershed district as well. I mean, these are all sort of the extra things that we're sort of on the hook for as a select board that we don't have any control over whatsoever. And, uh, and so the bottom line here is, uh, it, it might be two pockets from the same person. But it's, it's about, uh, are you taking it out of my disposable income? Or are you taking it out of, uh, you know, my prescription drug expenses? You know, because there are a lot of people who have to pay property taxes who are, you know, can't, they, they, they don't have a budget to pay an extra fifteen hundred dollars because they're on a fixed income. Uh, if someone goes from a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of, uh, of income in a year and goes to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of income a year, well, okay, they're gonna pay a little bit more in income tax. Okay, they can afford it. Maybe that tax rate ought to be lower. I would, I would argue perhaps that's true, but at least they're proportionate. And what I see going on in, I mean, this is be, way beyond our pay grade here, is that, uh, over the last couple of years, there's been this sort of migration to, uh, relying on property taxes rather than relying on sales tax and income tax as the way that we, we fund things. And the way the state's doing that is by backdoor and the cost of the school department. Right? They're not, they're not sending the funds to the school department, the school department. They're, they're between a rock and a hard place. It's not like teachers are making bazillions of dollars. It's not like the head count at the school department's going through the roof. It's, uh, they're paying people pretty much the same amount that they've always made. Inflation kicks in. Labor cost is eighty percent of the cost. And, uh, and, and then, you know, they're doing the best they can with the people that they, that they've got. So, um, no, state needs to, the state, it's got a full rainy day fund. It's full. The state's got, uh, uh, about ten to fifteen percent of the uh, uh, positions at the state level are unfilled. Right? They can't find people for them. But they're still budgeted and those, those funds are going into the departments. There's, there's a ton of sales and income tax revenue that's going into the state that's not flowing back to municipalities. And that's why, you know, we're, we're between a rock and a hard place here at this board and a lot of other municipalities statewide.
We know where, uh, I know that the state is, is looking at their, uh, the school funding formula. Is that, that, uh, have you heard anything about that?
Yes, so, so the, the, um, MMA Legislative Policy Committee has a whole list of bills that they're working through right now. They won't, they, they've narrowed down the list that they're going to submit, but they, they're not, um, at their meeting in November, they will finalize the ones that they're gonna submit to legislature. But yes, that is a, that is a, um, there's a whole bunch of things that are on the table at the moment from, from the municipal perspective. Um, certainly the, you know, there are all kinds of other perspectives that are gonna come to the school funding formula. Uh, the school management association has their own views on all that stuff, but we're still a little early. The bills aren't due yet. And MMA hasn't, hasn't picked its, um, right, everybody's sitting around till next week to figure out who's gonna win, to figure out who they're gonna go and ditch it to, right? Because MMA needs, they need sponsors. So whoever wins gets, you know, if you, if they consider, if we can, if we as municipalities consider you to be friendly, then we're gonna reach out to those people and, uh, ask them to submit bills on our behalf, because.
That could make a big difference for us, for any of, well, towns that are not, or maybe, uh, you know, that where the funding formula doesn't work well.
Right. Uh, I think.
For the big towns, but for the cities.
For the, uh, for the fact of not being very transparent, I would just say, like, I would just, um, just, um, wait and see, Doug. There's some, there's some big stuff. MMA is gonna be, they're, they're, they're going bigger going home this year. So budget's just gonna have a big, they're gonna have a rude awakening. But I don't, I don't wanna let it all out in the air. We don't know exactly what we're doing. I mean, we do, but we don't.
Justin, on the, um, the, uh, budget schedule, you wanted to push the first item back seven days, so it would be eleven nineteen?
That's, that's an internal date. So the, the eleven twelve is our, is our typical department head meeting. I, I meet, I meet with department heads on the second Tuesday of every month.
But you're saying we need.
I need, I, 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 my idea is that I will push that back to probably the nineteenth because Tony is gonna be, um, nurse mating his wife.
He'll be, you know, the nineteenth.
He won't be? He's not around the nineteenth? Okay, so I have to.
Something again.
Something again, same. You give, you give these people too many weeks of vacation and this is what happens.
Yeah.
I'm just kidding. But, but no, I have to, I have to find a date, but they, they need to have their budgets into me by the middle of December, no matter what. So whether they're there or not, they're going to do it.
Well, should we approve this budget schedule?
Yeah.
That's written?
Yeah, these first two, these first two dates are really internal stuff. It's really me and the department heads. They have to figure it out. It, it really doesn't matter to you. It's just if these, if these other dates, um, these other dates are all, um, select board meetings, if they work for you, um, when those people will come in, then that, that's what it will be.
Okay, I, I move we, um, we approve the draft budget schedule.
I'll second that.
So, uh, Joe has made a motion and Chris has seconded it, to approve the draft budget schedule. All those in favor?
Okay, can, can I ask one question about that? Are, are you folks all okay with me because of the, the idea that we're not, um, transparent enough? Are you okay with me sending text messages out on the weeks of those budgets to notify the people that have signed up for texting? That on, say, for Wednesday, one twenty-two, that we're gonna talk about public safety, police, fire, ambulance?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. I just wanna make sure. I'm conservative with the texts because I don't like getting them from people I don't wanna hear from. And generally, the town fits that hill.
Just got something from Donald Trump.
But if you're okay with that, I will do that on, on each of those things. I will say that on, on the, the, the second of February, the fifth of February, for example, I'll say, we, tonight, we are discussing public works, transfer station, recreation, Comston Hall in the library. And you're okay with, please show up.
And I think having a Facebook post of the Wednesdays, you know, of the schedule, you know, now, and then, you know, as.
The week before.
And exactly, post it now and say, here it is. And then just keep, you know, letting people know because if they wanted to see it on Facebook, they're gonna see it on Facebook.
Right, absolutely.
Can't read it, then I can't control that.
Right, okay. Fair enough. I just wanted to make sure. I, I heard that from the people that came. So we're gonna do everything we can and Dennis is gonna, he's gonna post when we do our newsletter. The budget's gonna be in the newsletter. It's gonna have the letters from, it's gonna have memos from the department heads explaining what their priorities are. So we're gonna try to do everything we can to try to communicate everything that you folks already knew. But we're gonna try to put it out there in as many ways as we can. As long as you're all okay with that.
After the word recreation, you find a way you're gonna wanna put in, then this includes the beach.
The beach, okay, yeah, 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 absolutely, yeah.
They're gonna come in and say, I never saw anything about the beach budget.
Yeah, yeah, fair enough, yeah. I get it, I get you. Okay, I just wanna make sure you're all okay with that.
Yeah.
But that's my intention.
What's the board's feeling about a, a budget committee? You mean like we used to have? Well, I think the school department and the RSU should have a budget committee, but not us. I talked to some.
Movement.
I've, I've seen a lot of, uh, Facebook posts advocating for budget, budget committee. And I reached out to those people who are making the posts and I said, great, were you ready to sign up? And they said, no.
Yeah, exactly.
Anyone who wants to, I, I would invite anyone who wants a budget committee to come on in and we'll appoint them on an ad hoc basis to the budget committee. And they can do the work with the department heads and dive right in.
Uh, my feeling is, which, which my opinion doesn't matter, right? You're, you're the voters. But the, the fact is that they don't show up to your meeting. If we just create more meetings for them not to show up to, I don't, I don't know what the point is.
Exactly.
Exactly.
Like, they don't, they don't participate. So I don't, I don't know how to.
And I will be on the.
Chuck Hilliard was on the budget.
They give fifty-one?
I get it. Ask him what happened to.
Fifty-one? He had fifty in August.
Oh, good for you guys. Congratulations, that's awesome.
Thank you.
That's a big deal.
He's not gonna make fifty-one at this rate.
That's on your mind, that's a big deal.
You don't really need.
I mean, and the people, we're gonna ask people to be a part of something that they don't come all year to know even what's going on and to have a finger on the pulse. How, how, how do you have a budget committee that works on something for a couple of months but isn't around? the whole rest of the year, you know, so.
All the budget committees are. They have. They're one one thing in mind. They have. They go into a budget committee with one project. That's and that's it. They care less about anything else.
Exactly.
Doesn't care.
Okay. Oh, then on to um consider uh a property tax abatement for Eleven Foster Lane.
I can I can give a brief summary, so she she wrote it. Donna wrote in her memo. But she did. She did notice that when this person came in that there was a location factor um on this particular property. So a location factor is, generally speaking, it would be like on the water or in a neighborhood. Um, that indicates that it's more valuable than a different neighborhood or a different body of water that she thought was erroneous. So um so she's so she she believes that this person is is deserving of this um abatement.
What's the amount of the abatement?
Uh, this results in a reduction in value of eighty-eight thousand or one thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars and sixty cents in tax, so it's significant.
Okay.
It's a significant abatement. Um, but she thinks that the the uh for whatever reason, this this factor has been applied for a long time. The the taxpayer never noticed. Um, whether it was sold, I I I don't know because I don't know the the details of it, but particular taxpayer came forward and and noticed that they thought they were being taxed higher than their neighbors, and they were correct, in Donna's uh opinion.
I make I make a motion that we follow the opinion of our assessor and approve the act of abatement for Eleven Foster Lane. Matt, pour you through the voice line.
Second. Who's the motion by Ken? Second by Joe to approve the recommended uh abatement for the property.
Mr. Chair, before we both done, um, we've our we've we've got some budget line for this fiscal year where we've got contingencies for this expense.
Yep, yep.
So this is not gonna blow our budget or
It's the overlay.
It's the overlay.
Right, yeah.
All of them favor. And Joe was
And just and just so you know, right, like, some of you who have been through a revale, you can expect next year about this time, you're gonna be doing a ton of these. And that's just. That's just how it goes, right? Like, we're gonna. We're gonna do a revale. So so next year, there'll be a lot of these these types of things that'll be coming through. You're probably getting ten at a time, so just
And that's and that's why I think we need uh when we come to the table to negotiate with property owners, we need to be able to say to them, look, we have been super sharp in terms of our budgeting process. Um, so that everyone is paying their fair share and not a penny more. And that we've there's there's not a lot of waste in our budget or not a lot of uh wants that are
Correct. To lean on that, it's just it's just when you, from a from a those who have been through a revaluation, you do not wanna muddy the waters with the town spending a lot more money in the same year that you do a revale. Because some people's values, I suspect in this community, almost everybody's value is going to double. When you look at what people are selling, you know, forty-foot ranches on a slab for what they're assessed for. They're assessed for one hundred and twenty thousand. They're selling for three hundred and eighty. They're gonna double. So I would. I would suspect that the mill rate's gonna be cut in half, but when you muddle that with new spending, it becomes very difficult for the assessor and me and you to say well, the revale is one thing. We're reassessing all the values, but we also can't have a huge increase in spending because then it's like, you know, not only you value it, how much your taxes? Right? Like, you can't have the spending and the and the valuation book at the same time. But but again, you guys get to decide that. Not me.
Consider appointing um Harold Jones to the RSU board. Harold Hawk?
He is.
He's Hawk. Oh, okay.
Harold Jones is a very conservative person.
Also sat on the select board for, what, twelve years?
He's not right here until market.
Can I make a motion? We appoint Harold Jones to the RSU two board of directors.
Yeah.
Okay. Second by Mark. Appoint Harold Jones to the RSU board of directors. In favor.
And for the record, he was the only person who lied, so just wanna make that.
There we go. Consider appointing Burley Anna Harris to the trails committee.
I make a motion. We appoint uh Burley Anna Harris to the trails committee.
I'll second that.
Motion by Ken, second by Chris to appoint Burley Anna Harris to the fails base. All those in favor? Yeah.
Next is Lawrence, number nine. Burn asphalt, crush stone rock, uh, two thousand, three hundred and forty dollars. Blue Rock Earthworks, uh, materials transport from the transfer station, three thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Kusano, I think it's Kusano, Inc. Twenty-three thousand, three hundred and seven. That was brush grinding at the transfer station. I believe some of that is um uh FEMA money for the stuff that we picked up on the side of the road. DJ's Municipal Supply, four thousand, one hundred and seventeen. That was uh rain, safety jackets and pants for the transfer station employees, new employees. NSK Burke, one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars for fuel. Uh, E-Lin Financial Services. That's town's credit card. It's a host of um software. Most of it is software for um Zoom, Adobe, things like that. Our annual payments. Um, Fabian Oil, one thousand, six hundred and sixty-four dollars for fuel, uh, heating fuel for the municipal uh office and Comston Hall. Grimal Industries Demo Waste, six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars. Jensen Baird, one thousand, five hundred and seventy-two. That's the town's attorney. Main Technology Group, uh miscellaneous um invoices. For some of it's past due, some of it is the monthly invoice, five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-two dollars. Lama Sanitary District, one thousand, seven hundred and five dollars. Sewer fees for the town buildings. Northeast Emergency Apparatus, eight thousand, four hundred and fifteen. It's mostly pump testing or testing on the front of the fire uh trucks. First name Isabel, the woman that works for the the uh comp plan and the planning board, one thousand, four hundred and forty dollars. I don't know how to pronounce her first. Do you?
No.
No.
She will come because when they when they just about get done with the comp plan, they have to have a meeting with you folks.
She already told me once, but I didn't write it down phonetically, so I can't remember.
She's only five times.
Right, it's a O E C H E S L I E. There's a lot of L's. I don't know.
Isabel.
Yeah, Isabel. Um, RSU number two, five hundred and forty-nine thousand, three hundred and eight dollars. Tools Auto Supply, Public Works, uh, two thousand, six hundred and seventy-three dollars. State of Maine Bureau of Motor Vehicles, eleven thousand, two hundred and eighteen. State of Maine Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife, one thousand, eight hundred and fifty for a total warrant, six hundred and thirty-five thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars and eighty-one cents.
I need the motion. We approve fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five warrant number nine.
Second.
Well, Chris has made a motion. Ken has seconded to approve warrant for nine for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. All those in favor?
Make a motion, Richard.
Second.
All in favor? It was my evening. I I didn't have a